Intro started. Standby for scroll. Thirty out. Standby for ten. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome to the Wednesday, September 22nd, 2021 Board of Sedgwick County Commission Meeting. I'm Akeem Asher, the Director of Communications. As recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic continues, the Sedgwick County would like to hear from our constituents on how the federal funds awarded to the county should be spent for the ARPA, the American Rescue Act. People can actually go to sedgwickcounty.org/ongoingarpa to actually fill out and give their feedback on the survey. There, you can also keep up to date with the county on how we're going to spend those dollars. Take a look at the website here. You just click on this link here, and it'll take you to the actual survey. National Voter Registration Day is next Tuesday, September 28th. This is a nonpartisan civic holiday celebrating our democracy. At its highest point, nearly 4.5 million people across the country register to vote on this day. As part of our ongoing communication of the COVID-19 data, yesterday, our Deputy County Manager, Tim Kaufman, presented to you a COVID-19 summary to, no, COVID-19 summary. Today, I want to just briefly touch base on what he presented during yesterday's staff meeting. Sedgwick County has given more than 238,000 cumulative total doses, more than 117 cumulative doses, dose twos, plus single doses of the eligible population, so that's 12 and older. Fifty-six percent of people have received their first dose, and 51% are fully vaccinated. Of the total population, 46% have received the first dose, and 42% are considered fully vaccinated. Sedgwick County has seen an increase, a 600% increase in testing as our community testing site since the week of June 28th. On today's agenda is a recommendation pending Board, pending Board of Commissioners' approval, so your approval, to relocate the testing site to 4115 East Harry Street with a potential opening date of Monday, October 4th. This location is in the former Wichita Mall between Big Lots and Calm Care Adult Services. Additional information will come out about the location transition pending your approval today. Commissioners, take a look at today's agenda. You will approve two resolutions, present two resolutions. One, a proclamation declaring forensic science week, and then there's a proclamation declaring first fire prevention week as well. There is a resolution appointing a new board member to the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board from District Two. You will consider a donation for emergency medical services, a selection of voting delegate and alternates for the Kansas Association of Counties, so that's the KAC, 2021 46th Annual Conference Event, a consideration of the process to request use of 2021 ARPA contingency funds, and last but not least, a report from Joe on a report of the bids and boards and bids and contracts. With that, Chairman, I'll turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you, Akeem, and good morning, everybody. Welcome to the September 22nd Board of Sedgwick County Commissioner Meeting. Appreciate all those that are here in the audience, as well as those tuning in on KPTS or on our Sedgwick County YouTube Facebook page. So with that, we will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing through the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez, Commissioner Dennis,
Present.
Commissioner Howell,
Present.
Commissioner Cruz,
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we received a message from staff that we did not have any emails as of yesterday evening, and so there's no emails to be approved that we received. With that, we'll move to the public agenda, and we did have one person sign up to address us this morning. That would be Claire Hirsch. Good morning, Claire. Welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address.
My name is Claire Hirsch, and I live at 115 North Brookside, Wichita, and I am here today to talk about the Goddard Public Schools Welcome Home Weekend. So I am a proud Goddard alumni from 2016, and on October 2nd, we are going to have our Welcome Home Weekend for all current and past alumni. And so I'm particularly excited about the meet and greet on Saturday from 3:00 to 6:00, and we'll have past teachers and alumni and alumni from all generations will be there to just say hello and get to know each other. And so you can find all the details by going to goddaredf.org, and that's all I have. So thank you for your time.
Okay, Claire, thank you. If, in high school, I played against Goddard a couple of times, does that count?
Did you win?
I can't remember.
It only counts if you lost.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for coming to address us. Appreciate it. Okay, receiving file, motion, receiving filed, public agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item A, proclamation declaring forensic science week.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz, please. Thank you.
Whereas forensic science is a vital public service, and access to quality forensic analysis dramatically improves the investigation of criminal activity, leading to the exoneration of the innocent and the prosecution of the guilty. And whereas forensic science plays a critical role in public outreach and crime prevention, and is evolving in its role as an important member of the criminal justice community. And whereas crime scene investigators, forensics examinate, examiners, forensic scientists, and forensic technicians provide unbiased, accurate, and reliable analysis of evidence. And whereas numerous professional organizations across the country have recognized September 19th through the 25th, 2021, as forensic science week. And whereas the dedicated and hardworking individuals that compose the Sedgwick County Regional Forensic Science Center are worthy of recognition for their commitment to proper scientific and medical investigations to support the cause of justice. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Lacy Cruz, on behalf of Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 19th through the 25th, 2021, forensic science week throughout Sedgwick County, and encourage all residents to learn more about the importance of forensic science and show their sincere appreciation for the people, technologies, and facilities that make reliable forensic science possible in our community. I will make a motion to adopt the proclamation.
Okay, I'll second that. Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to accept is our-
Dr. Shelley Stedman.
Dr. Shelley Stedman, welcome.
Thank you. Shelley Stedman, Director of the Regional Forensic Science Center. In 1993, Cory May, the District Coroner of Sedgwick County, conceptualized a facility that would consolidate all of the buildings she was working out of in downtown Wichita. And that same year, she and the county commissioners traveled to San Antonio, Texas, and took a tour of the Bear County Forensic Science Center. And that tour provided a vision, a vision where lab work and medical legal death investigation would all happen under one roof. And that county commission didn't know anything about CSI, and they hadn't seen OJ, you know, make the Bronco famous yet, but still, they were forward-thinking, and they recognized the value of a local facility to their constituents and the benefits that it could offer in the way of health and safety. They committed two and dedicated resources towards a building and a program that would aid in criminal investigation, the adjudication of criminal cases, tracking of important statistics like suicide, overdose rates, among other mortality rates, trends in street drugs that would help address gun violence, and that would provide a multidisciplinary approach to emergency response. And today, I wanted to share or put into perspective the proclamation with some case examples. I was hired in December of 1997, and a few months later, the De Bruus Grain Elevator exploded, and I got to see firsthand the magnitude of what a multidisciplinary facility could offer. We had medical investigators at the rescue site. They were collecting remains and transporting them back to our facility. We had pathologists and autopsy techs sorting those and collecting samples for DNA. We had DNA analysts working long into the night to determine how many unique profiles we had and whether all of the victims were accounted for. And I was in training, so I got sent to the family site to collect DNA standards from those individuals so we could use familial testing to identify the remains. I thought my job was fairly interesting. Then in 2002, I was working alongside another DNA analyst who was assigned a very violent double homicide. And he had obtained a swab from the point of entry from the crime scene, and he developed a DNA profile and put it into the DNA database. In 2019, 17 years later after he did that, we had a CODA scent, and I provided a name to the Wichita Police Department that ended up solving that crime. Well, I already knew my job was pretty interesting, but at that time, I didn't know that it might have benefits decades to come. And finally, in 2003, Lieutenant Ken Landware submitted evidence from a cold case to our laboratory. It was a bunch of stamps and envelopes that was sent by a serial killer over 30 years ago. A year later, DNA technology confirmed a positive association between a suspect and biological evidence left at the crime scenes of Josephine Otero, Nancy Fox, and Vicki Wagerly. And it was about that time that the whole world realized my job was fairly interesting. So over the years, the forensic science center and what we do there has become really sensationalized, but it's not 45 minutes plus commercials and the case is solved. It's not fancy SUVs and stilettos at the crime scenes. It's real people. It's real science, and you know that I'm not going to stand here without taking an opportunity to recognize the people that I work with. These are scientists who have worked really hard to earn advanced degrees in math and science. They're the kind of people that really liked organic chemistry class. No, nobody liked organic chemistry class, but these people have dedicated a lifetime to learning. Technology changes, and the needs of the district attorney evolves. These are doctors and autopsy technicians that spend long hours on their feet in the morgue, and they don't blink an eye when there's 12 postmortem examinations that need to be done on a Monday morning. Forensic science is our last responders who go to death scenes at all hours of the night in all corners of the county, and then spend the next morning talking to families who are distraught about the loss of their loved ones. And speaking of phone calls, it takes a special kind of person to answer the phone at the coroner's office. And without people like that, and the people who type the reports, and the people who receive the evidence from law enforcement and make sure it's properly stored and not compromised, and even the people who challenge each other to make sure that the quality of our work meets accreditation standards, those are the people at the forensic science center. And there are also other commissioned officers and civilians in other agencies who go to crime scenes and collect evidence, and if they didn't do their job right, we can do our job at all. So I'm delighted that you've offered this proclamation today, and I'm delighted that you've given me a moment to recognize the work of the county employees who are, live in the forensic science stream. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you for sharing that. I'd like to get that clip so I can share it with everybody so that they don't miss exactly that right there. That was, thank you for sharing that.
And Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Dr. Stedman, I know you touch people's lives. I get emails, and I forward them to you, and you're very, very responsive to take care of the needs of people that need your services even after the fact, because the family still has needs that go on even after some of the actions that you have to take. And I sincerely appreciate the responsiveness of your organization. I do appreciate exactly what you do for Sedgwick County. I just want to pass on my thanks.
And Dr. Stedman, it's been a joy to get to know you as I've served here, and I have a deep appreciation for you and your staff for what you do for our community, really for our state as well. But thank you very much, and thanks for sharing. That story is fantastic. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, proclamation declaring fire prevention week.
Okay, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas Sedgwick County is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community, and whereas fires, specifically home fires, are serious public safety concerns both locally and nationally. In 2019, 481,500 structural fires occurred, resulting in 3,704 civilian deaths, 16,600 civilian injuries, and $14.8 billion in property damage, according to the U.S. Fire Administration. And whereas three out of five home fire deaths resulted in fires in homes without working smoke alarms. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in home fires in half. And whereas Sedgwick County residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Sedgwick County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fire injuries through prevention, protection, and education. And whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety", this year's campaign works to educate everyone about the sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms make. Knowing what to do when alarm sounds will keep you and your family safe. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Chairman Peter F. Meitzner and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 3rd to 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge Sedgwick County residents to have an escape plan for their home, know at least two ways out, have working smoke alarms, and to support public safety activities and efforts of Sedgwick County Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week, October 3rd to 9th, 2021. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the proclamation.
Thank you. I'll second that. Any other comments right now? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And our own Fire Marshal, Dan Wagner, is here to receive. Thank you. Good morning, Fire Marshal.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Glad to be here.
Thank you very much for the proclamation. This year's motto, "Know the Sounds of Fire Prevention and Safety." Last year, more people worked from home than ever before, and we had more students working from home. And one of the things that was identified was our 911 call takers were hearing alarms in the background and people not understanding what those alarms meant or what to do when they occurred. So there, we've got our motto. So what we are trying to do is focus our attentions this year on educating people on what these sounds are for fire safety, what our alarm systems or smoke detectors are doing, and how to safely get out of our buildings and homes when these events occur. So that is our goal this year. We are going to be doing some clown shows finally this year and get back into the schools and start doing our public safety programs as things will evolve and allow us to do that. So again, thank you very much for the proclamation.
You bet. And thank you for all you do, and obviously for the whole department. So as a part of our first response. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Appointments. Item C, resolution appointing Alma Anne Jones to the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Patricia Parker, good morning, and welcome to the meeting.
Good morning. I'm Patricia Parker, Deputy County Counselor. You have before you this morning a resolution appointing Alma Anne Jones to the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board as recommended by Second District Commissioner Sarah Lopez. The position that she will be filling will be, is the unexpired term of Stephanie Jaeger, who has resigned. This term will expire January 15th, 2024.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez?
First, I want to thank you so much for being here today and taking this role on. I appreciate you. So I will make a motion to accept the resolution appointing Alma Anne Jones to this advisory board. Thank you.
I'll second, or a second. There's been a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here to do the swearing-in is our distinguished Kelly Arnold.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. All right, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board. So help me God.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this honor, and I promise to do my very best to do you proud, be fair and honest. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Appreciate it. Okay, next item, please.
New business. Item D, accept donation in the amount of $515 for the Sedgwick County Emergency Medical Services EMS.
Okay, and Commissioners and the audience, before we go into this Item D, we do have a, we do have an off-agenda item. So we have one, two, three, four, four new business items. So we'll do this, we'll do an off-agenda item at the end of, after Item G, just to let you know. Okay. Mr. Lanterman, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kevin Lanterman, you're Director of Sedgwick County EMS. I'm here this morning to present the donation for $515 to Sedgwick County EMS. A little background, EMS received this memorial from Ziegler Funeral Chapel in honor of Paula Howell. Ms. Howell survived by one daughter, two brothers, two sisters, seven nieces and nephews, and seven great nieces and nephews. I know she utilized EMS services quite a few times before her passing on July 28th, and we are honored that her family thought enough about Sedgwick County EMS to give the memorial money to EMS. So I recommend that you accept the donation and authorize the chairman to sign the thanking letter to the family.
Okay, thank you for addressing. I'll make a motion that we approve the acceptance of the donation.
Second.
So motion in a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Thank you again, Kevin. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, selection of voting delegate and alternates for the Kansas Association of Counties 2021 KAC 47th Annual Conference Event.
It says 46. Is it the 47th? Okay, Commissioners, we do this every year. We have representation at the annual conference. I think last year it was by Zoom, if I recall. And we do elect a voting member and a, and I think a alternate voting member. So I have not talked directly to either of you as far as the interest. I think last year, we had Commissioner Cruz.
It was me, yeah.
And I think we had Commissioner Dennis as the alternate. We can continue that, or we can pass it around, depending on any interest. Does any of the Commissioners have an interest in being the voting member to attend this conference and be a voter?
I'll make a motion. We appoint Commissioner Lopez to be our voting delegate.
Okay. I'll second that. Is there any other nominees or motions for representation? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. So that'll be our voting delegate and the alternate. Is anybody, is anybody else planning to attend?
I'm attending.
You're attending? Okay, so Commissioner Cruz is attending. I'll make a motion that she, that Commissioner Cruz be the alternate voter.
Second.
So motion in a second. Any other comments or any other suggestions for nominees? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. So thank you, Commissioners, for getting this chore done. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, consideration of the process to request use of 2021 ARPA contingency funds.
Ms. Lindsey Poe, we haven't seen you in almost a week.
I know. You're really sad, aren't you?
I know.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Poe Russo, your CFO. Happy Fall is my third favorite day of the year.
It's a beautiful day.
It'll be a good day for all of us.
Yeah, very good.
So you're getting some handouts now, and I am going to try and pull them up here for you. So back on July 21st, and then July 27th, you all approved kind of an overarching spending plan that was then amended for the premium pay on September 8th. But when you originally approved that back in July, you may recall that there was a $2 million contingency that we had set aside. We were really hoping we wouldn't need it. So we did not have you define process at that time to access it. Well, of course, COVID has spiked in our community, and so instead of maybe the focus on the recovery that we were talking about back in July, we're shifting more to the response side. And so we have had a few requests that have come through in the last few weeks. One that you'll actually hear during bid board today for a COVID testing site to, you know, address that increase in testing. So we need a process by which to receive those and evaluate those and get them approved, because oftentimes what is coming before us are pretty urgent needs. They're not necessarily things that we can wait the two weeks that we normally require to get something on a commission agenda. So what you have before you is a process that would collect information- So what you have before you is a process that would collect information. The form that's displayed up here on the screen basically asks departments to fill out information and explain the need. What is the urgent category that would be eligible under ARPA? The second page asks them to tie it to COVID, describe how it would address COVID, and then finally, if there would be ongoing costs that would be associated with it, obviously we want to know about that before a decision is made. So departments would fill out that form, and then they would follow the process that is outlined here in the flowchart form. So you all were gracious enough to give us some extra staff to help with ARPA, and so our ARPA grant analyst would receive this form from departments. We would route that to the financial assistance team. If you all recall during CAREERS, we talked about a group of finance and legal staff who would review and kind of manage the day-to-day tasks associated with CAREERS. That group is back in action for ARPA. So that group would review these requests in light of these four criteria. What is the urgent situation? Is it eligible under ARPA? Does it seem like it can meet the requirements under that federal uniform guidance? And can we get that spent within this calendar year? Obviously, because we're going to come back to you with a 2022 and beyond spending plan later this year. If all of that is met, the financial assistance team likely will vote to recommend approval for that expense. That would then go to the county manager saying, yes, I agree, this seems urgent and reasonable and something we need to do now. If that happens, then we will route it to Wood O'Briens, who, if you recall, is our vendor who, and our consultant, who helps us determine eligibility and helps us assess things pre-award. They would do a memo for us, and if they deem it eligible as the experts, then we would route that to Joe Thomas as the purchasing director to begin the proper procurement strategy. So that would be the process that we would request to you to access the $2 million in contingency for the rest of this year. Obviously, we will come back with a strategy and a process for anything in 2022 and beyond. Just so you know, next month, which is, I guess, only about a week away, at the beginning of October, we'll be sending out a refreshed needs assessment survey to departments. We're still having some conversations with them about mental health and substance use, what court backlog we'll need, all of those things. And so we'll send that out to get a refreshed idea of what they'll need so that we can put that together for a spending plan for you starting January 1st. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I would recommend you vote to approve this process.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez.
Just have one question. How long does this process take? I mean, if it's going through these steps and going to Wood O'Briens, what's the timeline and how fast that goes?
It largely will depend on that original form and how detailed the information is that we get from departments. If it's completed well, we can get this done within a week, that receipt, review and approval. Though our project manager with Wood O'Briens has been getting stuff turned to us same day or next day.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sure.
And Lindsey, on the last page that you gave us with the steps, the process. Red slash McCabe, Anisa Red?
Yes. Anisa Red and Martha McCabe are the two folks who worked together to put this process together first. Anisa is our ARPA grant analyst. She's on county staff in finance, and then Martha McCabe is the project manager from Wood O'Briens, who's been kind of guiding us through this process.
Okay, because I do see the Wood O'Briens logo on the front.
Yes, we rely on them very heavily.
Yeah, so this has been vetted seriously through.
Yes.
We're not inventing this as much as we're using other best practices as referenced by Wood O'Briens.
Yes, sir.
Got a couple of questions here. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Lindsey, I think it's a great idea. I appreciate you thinking forward in this idea. I know that I've gotten several emails in the past about our testing facility, for example, and I sent those over to our manager, and there's some concerns. I actually went out there a week ago and toured the facility that we've got at Sedgwick County Park to see exactly what was going on, and it was obvious that it wasn't meeting the needs that we had. So we had to have some way of reacting to that, and that's what we're seeing today. This is the way that we can react to different issues that come up, like our testing facility. And as a result of that, we're going to have a Bid Board thing coming up in the near future. But by having a process and one that Wood O'Brien has agreed to, I think we're on the right track to be able to respond to other things such as our testing facility. So thanks for doing this. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Just for clarity's sake, this is for internal departments only.
Yes, ma'am.
So could you give us a timeline update of our navigator position?
So the navigator RFP, so we're not necessarily hiring a position. The hope is to be able to contract for that. That RFP hopefully will be going out sometime this week, and so it will have responses back in a few weeks. And then I know that Brent's goal is to have that up and operational at some point in October, if we can swing it.
Okay, so you know, I like dates. So the date in which it's going to be completed, we're going to close it on the 24th?
I believe.
Our RFP is going to close this Friday?
It will go out this week.
Oh, it's going out this Friday?
Yes.
Okay. And so then, if we have two weeks, that puts us at October 7th or 8th?
Right, when the responses are due, and then we'll have an evaluation committee that needs to review those, and then it will come to the Bid Board and then to the Commission for approval.
Okay, so line that out for me.
Is it okay if I confirm that with Brent and get back to you? That is his, his baby, and I do not want to overstep and speak out of turn. But I can send you an email or he can send you an email as soon as this email, or commission meeting is over.
So what's the typical timeframe if we have an RFP that's open for two weeks? We have the responses come back, we evaluate those. How long does that typically take?
Depending on the size of the committee, it can be a week to two weeks unless there's, we need to go back out and ask questions, in which case that can extend up a little bit. So again, a lot of it depends on the quality of the response that we get.
Sure. Okay, so are you, would you say that 1st of November?
That, yes. That would definitely be the latest time we would like to be it, to have it stood up.
Okay.
But we very much want to get that stood up as quickly as possible. And one of the things that we're going to try to do by the end of this month is get a resource page out. I'm sure you've all now seen that on the finance page, we do have an ARPA page that's dedicated just to American Rescue Plan Act documents and discussion. And one of the things that Wood O'Briens has been working with our team on is to put together a comprehensive list of resources from federal and state government so that in that gap time, we still have a way to point people to those resources. And then also, resources listed at the bottom of the page, not necessarily endorsed by the county, but groups that can help with putting together grant applications, likely at a cost, but trying to kind of fill that gap between now and when we have that community navigator process stood up. So we are very much interested in trying to make sure the community can get help until we can get our program stood up.
Okay. It's just kind of nice to have some sort of frame of reference.
Understood.
When everybody's coming at me like.
I totally.
Asking all these questions. Okay, so 1st of November-ish, and the way you're directing everybody to this page on finance, okay. Okay, thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay. Lindsey, I don't see any other questions. Thanks again for putting this together, at least for our departments. Very useful. Thank you.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve this process as presented? Make that motion.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Item G, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Meeting on September 20th, 2021.
Joe, I didn't, I didn't realize it's noon already.
Yes.
It's really.
We're a couple hours away, but I don't know what I'm going to do getting up so early and being here. I really like it.
Did you set your alarm and everything?
Yes, yes.
You look good. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, for the record. A special meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts was held on September 20th, and we want to have your approval on this recommendation. This is for the COVID testing site for Health Department, and as a reminder, Lindsey just mentioned this earlier, it's funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. Our recommendation today is to accept the quote from Coco Properties LLC, which is located at the Wichita Mall, and establish a lease price and at the rate listed for six months with a six-month option to renew. So I'll be happy to try to answer any questions. We also have representatives here that can answer as well and recommend approval.
Okay. And that's the only item, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, thank you to the Wichita Mall Ownership Group for working with you, and I didn't have any discussions. I don't think anybody had any external discussions with any of those, so we've done the process the way it's supposed to have been.
Yes, sir.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's a motion and a second to approve. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll get that word out with Communications and as soon as possible and ramp it up. And so Commissioners, feel free to spread the word on this since we get some queries here. Okay, I'll make a motion that we do an off-agenda item related to a grant.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for an off-agenda item related to a grant application. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And here is Joan to talk to us.
Yes, good morning.
Thank you.
Chairman, good morning, Commissioners. Joan Tammany, Executive Director with Calm Care. I'm here today because USD 259 and Calm Care wish to continue our school mental health program for the current school year. This is an off-agenda item simply because of timing. The school board met and approved the contract on their end, and then they realized the submission date back to the state was pretty quick. So this would typically be a consent agenda item, but it's an off-agenda item today. This is the fourth year of our partnership. There's no change in funding or contract terms. I do have Chantel Westbrook here with me, who's the Director of our Children's Services, if there's additional questions. Just a reminder, this overall goal of the program is to improve the social and emotional wellness and outcomes for students by increasing access to treatment providers. The total program, the funding of the program is a combination of the $1,049,031 funding from the Kansas Department of Education paid through USD 259, along with fees we collect through Medicaid or commercial insurance for the services we provide. This is an important program, and through many conversations and planning meetings with USD 29, we know that while it will be again a continuing difficult year because of COVID, we believe we have a good plan in place to meet the needs of the youth in the program, and we're mutually excited by the opportunity to continue this arrangement and improve the lives of school-aged youth. As you recall, each of the partnerships is required to report regularly to the Kansas Department of Education on outcomes and to the legislative champions of this and committees of this program. We will continue to do that, and the three outcome measures of the program are, if you're, I don't know that all of you remember, but it's school performance, school attendance, and behavior in the classroom. Last year, we served 785 youth and families in year three. The results, again, were very positive. We had a 70% increase in school attendance, 64.5% improvement in behavior, and a 60% improvement in academics. So it's definitely worthy and important to these youth being served. Students and families continue to report that being able to receive the services during a typical school day saves them time and effort of trying to get kids out of school or away from their homes to attend appointments. A lot of kids are struggling with depression and anxiety. There's trauma in the population that we serve in the school, impulse control. These youth are sharing with our providers that they're seeing and experiencing a decrease in depression and feeling more confident in managing their impulse control and increased self-esteem. So as in previous years, we're not seeking additional positions. We know staffing continues to be a challenge, but we have a plan with the school district. We think it's important to continue already started, the year started, and we believe because it's team-based care, the school has liaisons who are clinicians. We have clinicians, we have case managers, and we've crafted a way to cover most of those schools, even though we're spreading people across multiple schools rather than singularly in a school. We hope to continue to recruit. We believe serving kids in the school reduces the access to crisis services, and we're going to continue to try to cover all of the remaining schools that are not covered presently. So my ask today is that you approve the contract, authorize the chairman to sign all the necessary documents, and authorize the establishment of budget authority for this contract. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joan. I think we had received a little bit of information on this, so thank you for clarifying, and I know this is a last-minute thing.
Yes.
Got a couple of comments or questions. Commissioner Cruz.
I just wanted to, on the website, it kind of mentions where the schools are at, which schools we're in, if parents are interested in knowing which schools this program is provided, maybe, I mean, if parents don't know that it's there.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We could put it on our website, too.
Yeah, well, I think it is, actually.
Is it on ours?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, the intervention program is different. Is that different?
This is the mental health intervention.
Okay, yeah, it's on here.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's on here. So it's under Calm Care Youth Mental Health. So if you're listening and you're interested to know which schools this is available at, and if you can't find it, you could always email me, but this is an important program. I wish every single school in our county was listed on here because we know that mental health doesn't escape any, I mean, it reaches everybody at some point, possibly.
And to elaborate on that, and Chantel may be able to do a better job than I do, but the school also received, their ARPA funding is called ESRA dollars, so they have hired additional clinicians in their schools, and because we couldn't meet an additional need above and beyond this, they've also contracted with other providers to capture some of the other schools. So the presence is much enhanced this year, but everybody's struggling with the same issue of resources. So it'll grow. As we get clinicians, it'll grow.
Okay, so if they have extended through their funds, is there a way that we could maybe mention that somewhere on here in case our program doesn't?
No, see, why not?
There'd be a way? Okay. Yeah, that's very important. I know that I struggle to get kids to appointments, you know, being the only one taking people places, so I just passed Tom on the way to home from school today. I was like, oh, that's Tom.
Yeah, our parents are really appreciative because, you know, many of them have employers that aren't very sensitive to a lot of external...
Right.
...family needs, so this meets that.
Well, thank you for being here. I'll make a motion that we approve the, oh, sorry, when it's appropriate, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Joan, thanks for being here and briefing on this once again. I think this is a critical program. I've supported it from the very beginning. I want to see it in all the schools, as Commissioner Cruz mentioned. And you and I had some conversation yesterday by email. My only worry was, you're 200 people down right now in Calm Care, and I just wanted to make sure that we would be able to still provide all of the services we normally provide and be able to do everything that we need to do in the schools, and you assured me that we would be able to do that. So, that was my true concern, is that we wouldn't be robbing Peter to pay Paul in this case. So, again, I think it's a great program. As a previous teacher in schools, I know that it's something that we definitely need in the school districts, and I appreciate that you found a way that we can continue this program and still do everything else that we need to do in Calm Care. So, I will support the motion when Commissioner Cruz makes it. Thank you.
And Commissioner Lopez?
Well, as we're speaking, a friend of mine who works with the Juvenile Corrections texted me and just said how amazing it is to have Calm Care employees in the schools because it makes such a difference. So, I just want you to know how much this is appreciated, and it's being seen, and apparently it's doing a really good job, so thank you for continuing this.
Well, and I will say, this particular program is also a recruitment opportunity because clinicians and case managers that want to do work in the school, I mean, it's not a hard sell for us. It's work people want to do, and their biggest fear is ending, so...
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. So, just real quick before I do that, have we seen through the efforts of the bonus program that we enacted, have we seen any of those positions? Have we seen interest?
Well, I will say that on our case manager, we're getting more applicants. They're not all qualified and not all a good fit, but I will say that we were having no case management activity for weeks and weeks, and we are actually having people to interview now, which is great. We have hired a clinician, I don't know if we have a start date for her for the schools, and that bonus and the promise of enhanced rates with the reclassifications is a draw for her. She worked for us previously, so there's very little training for us, but couldn't stay because of the salary, so, and we have another one who is ready to accept, just waiting on a salary offer. So, I would say, since we haven't had clinician applicants in a long, long time to get any, and then we have two part-times in the mix as well, is helping.
Great.
We just have to be competitive.
Yeah, well, if you don't mind, thank you for that. So, I'd really like to recognize you, Chantel. Would you mind coming up here for just a second?
She's awesome.
She is awesome. Will you just introduce yourself for a second?
Yes, yes, I'm Chantel Westbrook. I'm Director for our Children's Services, and I oversee our school program and other programs, and it's a program I'm definitely very, very proud of. So, I appreciate your comment and others, so, yeah.
Well, I appreciate how responsive you are to me. Every single time I text you or call you, you answer, and I appreciate the work that you're doing, so thank you for allowing me to put you on the spot for a second.
Yeah, yeah, I'm glad to help, and I feel like I've been here long enough, I should be able to answer questions, so I'm always open to that, so...
Well, with that, Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the item as requested.
Okay. Second. Motion and a second. Any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Chairman, good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stills, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items H through Y this morning, which is inclusive of item K that I just thought I would mention. It's a $2.1 million grant renewal from KDHE regarding WIC that I think is significant for the community and good news. So, ask that you approve all of these consent items this morning.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'll make a motion that we approve items that through Y. Motion and a second. Is there any comments or any questions from the Commissioners? Sorry, I meant to ask earlier. Being none, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, do you have anything to report on the committees that you serve on? I don't see any at this time, so we will, there's no committee, no committee reports. Next item, please.
Other.
Does the Commissioners have anything under other to share? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to thank everybody in the community who took part in the Healthcare Heroes donation, and then everybody who helped from the county. We had some interns and a couple of guys in facilities that took the day to help carry all this stuff out and unload a truck and go to multiple locations, so it was a big success, better than I had anticipated it would be, and I know our hospitals and our medical community have been very thankful for that, so I just want to make sure to thank everybody for their help with that.
Okay. Others, Commissioner Cruz?
And because Commissioner Lopez is very humble, I just wanted to mention that on the hospital call on Monday, one of the administrators from the hospital said that he had not seen staff happy in a very long time, and so I think that the efforts that you put together and organized, and I just, I want to commend your efforts. That's, this is a lot to do. In addition to all the work that we do here as Commissioners going above and beyond, I just think that is incredible, and I'm, I'm just, I'm thankful that, you know, we have, I'm thankful that you're here, so thanks for allowing me to say that.
Okay. Any others? I got a couple of announcements. Speaking of hospitals, we did have a correction to the hospital numbers that were revealed on, usually on Monday, Tom received a message that a slight increase from, so that's already posted on the website.
That's correct.
Great, okay. The other couple of announcements, we do have an en banc meeting, which is a meeting between the Commission and City Council members. That's scheduled for Tuesday next week at 9:30 at the City Hall Boardroom. It should be of interest because we've got a lot of common things to discuss between ourselves and the City Council. Also, I don't want to steal your thunder, Mr. Zoo Man, but the Slosson family is dedicating a Asian Big Cat trek next Tuesday as well, and it just is just a reminder that the Slosson family is outstanding, have been forever in our community, and other families and individuals and companies that support the zoo with the various items that they support and fund. And also, on Tuesday and Wednesday next week, downtown could be rather busy because the Father Capen memorial services will be ongoing. There'll be a little bit of a, I don't call it a parade, but I think there'll be a, from the memorial, from the military memorial area park to the cathedral that will be going on, so the streets will be blocked, and the funeral is actually Wednesday, and so, because we do not have a scheduled commission meeting on the 29th. So, those are just a few reminders out there for the public to know. Any other, anybody else have anything under other? I don't see any. We do not have a, we don't have any, what am I looking for?
Executive session.
Executive session. We do not have executive session today, so if the Commissioners do not have anything